Seattle City Council will come to order. It is 2 o'clock, and I'm Sarah Nelson, President of the Council. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Strauss. Councilmember Wu. Councilmember Hollingsworth.
Present.
Councilmember Kettle.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Morales.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Present.
Councilmember Saka.
Here.
Council President Nelson.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much. So first, we will have Councilmembers Wu and Morales have a proclamation proclaiming February 7th, 2024 to be the day, to be Day of Remembrance for the expulsion of Chinese from Seattle. So Councilmembers Wu and Morales, you will first introduce the proclamation, and then I will open the floor for comments from Councilmembers. And after Councilmember comments, we will suspend the rules to allow Councilmembers Wu and Morales to present the proclamation to our guests and allow our guests to provide brief comments. Councilmember Wu, I believe you are the first to speak on this. You are recognized in order to introduce the proclamation.
Thank you, Council President. So a little bit of a history. In July of 2015, a resolution 31605 was passed in Seattle City Council, which was a testament to the regret for the anti-Chinese legislation that the state of Washington and the Seattle City Council had passed at that time. It stands as a recognition of the enduring contributions made by the Chinese community to the vibrant tapestry of Seattle. This resolution reaffirms our unwavering commitment to the civil rights of every individual, irrespective of their background. And says, "Reflect upon our past, we cannot ignore the darker chapters. On February 7th, 1886, a wave of anti-Chinese sentiment erupted into violence. An angry mob of about 1,500 people descended upon the Chinese quarters of Seattle. Some 350 Chinese residents were forcibly removed, loaded onto wagons, and brought to the docks, where they were expelled from their homes and forced onto steamers like the Queen of Pacific." So I am a product of these exclusionary policies, even though my family has been here since the late 1800s. I am the first generation born in the U.S. because the women in my family had not been able to immigrate until recently. So today, as we stand on the, on the precipice of progress, we must not forget the lessons of history. We must confront our past with courage and humility and strive to build a future rooted in understanding and compassion. And this is why we proclaim that February 7th as the Day of Remembrance for the expulsion of the Chinese from Seattle. This is not just a commemoration, but a call to action. It is a testament to our collective resolve to stand against discrimination in all its forms and to build a more inclusive and equitable society for generations to come. And so I will send this to Councilmember Morales for further comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Wu. I don't have anything to add except to say that I appreciate you bringing this and really think it's important that we honor the experience of the Chinese community in Seattle and, really, all along the West Coast and acknowledge that, as a country, we have a history of racist policies and practices that really cause incredible harm to our neighbors. And this is an opportunity for us to acknowledge that harm and to make sure that we don't let it continue to happen and that we ensure that we are commemorating the survivors, the families, and the community and that we, as a city, really move forward and make sure that we don't let these things happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Oh, thank you, Council President. So I would like to say thank you to Councilmembers Wu and Morales for bringing this proclamation forward. As a council, as we, as a council, work to build stronger communities and create a more equitable and unified Seattle, we must acknowledge past harm and face how it impacts the city today. This proclamation requires us to have that self-assessment and to do better. And so I am proud to have my signature attached to this proclamation. Thank you both very much.
Are there any other Councilmembers that wish to speak? Many of us made comment yesterday. I will note that I grew up in Sacramento, and I remember along the Sacramento Delta, there are, there are several towns that were founded by, by workers who were, who made the levees, along the Chinese workers descendants of that made the levees there. So we have benefited from that labor, and I think that it's incumbent upon us to recognize our mistreatment as well. Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Wu and Councilmember Morales for this. Too often recently, efforts have been made to hide our history, our nation's history, and even criminalize it. So I view today's proclamation as really an important step, that we can acknowledge our history and we can learn from it and build on it. And so thank you, because it stands in contrast what we've seen recently across our nation. So thank you for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other comments right now. Councilmembers, you are welcome to present the proclamation to our guests. So now, if there is no objection, the council rules will be suspended to present the, well, we already presented the proclamation, but if there are no objections, I would like to open the floor to allow for Winston Lee, President of United Hub, to provide some brief remarks to the council and members of the public. And seeing no objection, the rules are suspended. Go ahead, please. Sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, dear Seattle Councilmembers, President, I'm truly honored to accept this proclamation today. It's a significant moment for our community as we remember the tough times our senators faced during the Seattle Chinese expulsion of 1886. Back then, unfair laws and violent acts forced many Chinese immigrants out of their homes. But despite these challenges, they showed incredible strength and resilience. As we mark this day in remembrance, let's honor their courage and determination. Let's also commit to create a more fair and inclusive society for everyone, regardless of where they come from. Thank you so much for this important recognition, Councilmember Wu, Councilmember Morales, and the President, and also all the council members. Thank you so much. And also, I want to invite you all to join us for the rally and the march for this coming Saturday, February 17th, Chinatown CID, Hin Hay Park, at 10:00 a.m. Your presence will be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the viewing public out there that didn't tune in yesterday, this proclamation was signed by all nine council members. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming, and thank you, Councilmembers Wu and Morales, for bringing this forward. Colleagues, at this time, we will open the hybrid public comment period, and we're accepting comment on agenda items. If you're, if you're here to, to provide comment on Agenda Item 1, which is Council Bill 120738, that has a required public hearing, and the public hearing will open after the council considers the consent calendar. So if that's what you would like to talk about, please wait until then. Madam Speakers, how, Madam Clerk, how many speakers are signed up to speak in public comment today?
We have about...
We have three remote.
Thank you.
We have three remote.
And six present, and chambers.
Okay. Let's start with the, the in-person speakers, please, and go ahead. And let's see, everybody will have two minutes to speak, and then we will, we'll have in-person and then go to the remote speakers as well. And you can provide the instructions now.
Thank you. The public comment period will be moderated in the following manner. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers will be called on in the order in which they registered. We will start with the in-person speakers first. All speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of the allotted time. And if speakers do not end their comments within the allotted time provided, the microphone will be muted to allow us to call on the next speaker. The public comment is now open, and we'll begin with the first in-person speaker on the list.
The first speaker is Debbie Wilson.
Hi, my name is Debbie Wilson, and I'm the owner of Fresh Family LLC. And I wanted to call to let, come today to let you know how much I appreciated winning a contract with the City of Seattle as a black woman-owned business. And it's a very big contract. We're keeping all of the homes and encampments clean and cleaning up downtown corridor under the bridge when the big fire happened. That was us cleaning that up, my business. We have 13 workers that came with the contract to do it, BIPOC community. We have five of those who are under 40 years old that now have purchased a home because they have came and we're giving them prevailing wage and we're giving them living wage. They call it prevailing wage, but I call it living wage. We've manicured the City of Seattle, downtown Seattle, Lake City, Magnolia, Ballard, all the way out the corridor. We have really cleaned the city up and we're, we love doing this work. It's a wonderful thing, and by us doing this work and you guys, the city giving us the contract, we've been able to put this together, have it happen. What has happened to me now and why I come before you today is because I'm being squeezed by Seattle Parks Department out of this position, and I need some help. There's nowhere for me to go. I've been everywhere, and they told me that, when I asked them why this happened, they told me I was led down the wrong road because they don't, this contract is not a black woman's contract. And those are the reasons why I have, and I want to be talked to somebody so that this can be known. This is what happens. You can win the contract, but once you win the contract, you're squeezed out if you're not the right person. And that's what's happening to me right now, and I want some accountability for why Seattle Parks is doing this to my business. Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ron Jones, followed by... Is it Lucides Perez?
Hello. Hello, my name is Ron Jones, and I'm with Fresh Family LLC as well. Won't take as much. I work with my mother. We own a BIPOC business that services the City of Seattle. We've won a contract with the city. Just kind of skipping through, we have, we've been squeezed by the department. They are cutting hours out of our contract. They don't make sense to the contract. They're treating us differently than the company that had it before, that wasn't a minority-owned company. We are, their, their, their workers in the field are coming to us making complaints. I've had an internal whistleblower write a letter telling us how it's happening to us inside of the department and what's happening, as well as internal email where they're saying that they want to get us out, where they want to squeeze us out of here. And we've done nothing wrong. We have nothing but positive accolades. We've loved working with the City of Seattle. We work with the City of Renton. We work with the University of Washington, and we, and we've really loved providing these opportunities to our community. I mean, we, we provide prevailing wage jobs to over 13 people now and have changed the lives of so many people, and it's, it makes an impact on our city, what we're doing. We all live in Seattle. We know what it looks like outside and that we're not ready to decrease cleaning up our encampments or keeping our areas cleaner than they are. And we just, we need some guidance. We've reached out to the department. We went to some people within, and we haven't been, and we're just running into dead ends. We have communication saying we'll be followed up with, and we're not receiving those responses. We're, right now, they're saying, "You're going to work for the hours," we say, "but still do all the same job," which means they're asking us to work for free, which purchasing said isn't, you know, isn't acceptable, but, but still, and contradictory to the contract. But at the same time, in the email, he says, "We want to do it anyway, and we're going to stick with the new terms." We said, they set new terms for an existing contract, and somebody just, we just need some help. Another nine seconds. That's all I need, all I'm going to say. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lucides Perez. Followed by Adriana.
Ay, pero no traemos que no iba a traducir.
Yo no puedo. No, alguien más que puede ayudarte?
No. Aquí no creo.
They currently don't have translation services. They can provide their public comment in Spanish, and then we can see what we can do afterwards. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and provide your comment. And also, you can send a written comment as well. May I speak? I don't know if I, is that allowed, Amelia? Oh, may I speak?
Buenas tardes. Yo puedo tratar de traducirle. Y también, por favor, escriban lo que van a decir, y luego aquí lo traducimos y se lo damos a los, a los colegas aquí.
Okay, gracias.
Sí, como no, pero despacito, sí, porque...
So we'll go ahead and double the time, make it four minutes instead of two. Pueden empezar.
Bueno, antes todo, muy buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Antes todo, muy buenas tardes. Muchas gracias por permitirnos una vez más estar acá.
Thank you so much for giving me another, giving us another opportunity for being here. Como?
No sé si nos recuerden.
Oh, I don't know if you remember us.
Somos comunidad sin fronteras.
We're the community without borders.
Hoy venimos a agradecerle por todo el apoyo que nos brindaron.
Today, we come to thank you for all the assistance you've given us.
Para movernos rápidamente.
To move quickly.
Y trabajar por nuestra comunidad.
And to work for our community.
Para asegurar viviendas.
To secure housing.
Por las acciones que ustedes tomaron.
For the actions you all took.
No tienen precio.
Are priceless.
Ya que aseguraron que nuestros hijos y nuestras familias.
Now that you've made sure that our families and our kids.
No terminaran en la calle.
Wouldn't go to the street.
El día que nosotros vinimos a visitarles.
The day we came to see you.
Pidiendo ayuda con mucha urgencia.
Asking for help very urgently.
Les agradecemos de todo corazón lo que han hecho por nosotros.
We appreciate with all our heart everything you've done for us.
Por nuestra comunidad.
For our community.
Y esperando continuemos con esta relación.
Puedes repetir eso?
Ah.
Repita, por favor.
Agradecemos todo lo que han hecho por nuestra comunidad.
Sí.
Y esperamos continuemos con esta relación.
I hope to continue with this relationship.
Por el bienestar de nuestra familia.
For the well-being of our families.
Y de todos los refugiados que lleguen.
And all the refugees that come, that will come.
Si en algún momento.
If at any moment.
Requieren de nuestra comunidad.
You need something from our community.
Nosotros estamos aquí para ofrecer nuestra labor.
We're, we're here to offer our, our work, our services.
Y con mucho gusto.
And with a...
Queremos ser recíprocos.
And we want to reciprocate.
Con toda la ayuda que nos han brindado.
For all the help you've given us.
Atentamente comunidad sin fronteras.
Sincerely, a community without borders.
Le traemos una flor como agradecimiento. Es un detalle muy sencillo, pero de corazón. Le traemos una flor a cada uno de ustedes.
With all our heart, we're bringing flowers, one flower for each of us here, for each of you, and gratitude for all you've done for us.
¿Si la pueden recibir? Si la pueden recibir.
Amelia, you can receive those.
Gracias, muchas gracias. Gracias. Muchísimas gracias de corazón.
Thank you very much from the bottom of our heart.
De toda la comunidad muy agradecida.
On behalf of the whole community.
Hasta luego, gracias.
Sí. Gracias, muchísimas gracias. You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihai. Zihai, Mayduri Dem Nazi fascist hundo.
Stop.
My name is Alex Zimmerman, a president of...
Please pause.
It's exactly what I want speaking about this.
No. We, I said last time. Cut the mic, please.
Yes, it's exactly what I want to speak about. Discrimination. This Chinese woman.
Please, no.
You have discrimination.
Would you please be seated? Security, please be seated.
You have different opinion. Is this very important? She absolutely right. I support her by dark person. You cannot, I don't move me. Call to policeman. I don't move.
Okay.
I speak like everybody like. You, you never speak about rule, what is you accept 10 year ago, you know what it mean? Everybody calls this Alex Zimmerman rules. You make a rules what is above US Supreme Court. Why you doing this right now? I have right for my opinion. What is I use, Dory word? Legal, not legal word? Why you doing this? What is your motivation? She speak about discrimination. I want speak about discrimination too. I want stop in this idiotic rules, what is you take 10 year ago. And everybody, ever press, talk about this Alex Zimmerman rules. This Nazi Gestapo rules what is Adolf Hitler and Nazi did in Germany. Absolutely. It's above Constitution, above Supreme Court decision, above dozen court decision.
Wait, I thought that... Okay, stop. I thought that the, the clock was still going. Excuse me. I will tell you. You need to stop speaking so that I may speak. You called names. From the get-go, I have said that that constitutes abusive language, which, which is disruptive behavior.
What is Dory name this? It's a political name. What is Dory name you talk?
You've been told several times before, and you continue to intentionally disrupt and disturb the orderly conduct of this meeting. You were warned that if you continue violating council rules, you'd be excluded from chambers. So under Rule 11D5, you are excluded from this meeting and future meetings for a period of 28 calendar days. You may still provide written public comment to the city clerk for distribution to the council at future public comment periods. You have five days to appeal. Please step away from the podium. And security will assist you to your seat.
I have right. Policeman supposed to be cop, supposed to be arrest. Doing this. Yes, I'm sick from this. She take me out because I have different opinion. Why? Who give her right doing this?
Have your seat. Your time is up. I've explained. You now sit down and leave chambers.
I have 16 trespasses before for 1400 day, only because I have different opinion. I never.
Go ahead.
Took a rule in regulation for one second. You totally dismiss US Supreme Court freedom of speech in dozen court what is counted. You are Nazi, real Nazi fascist.
That is what I mean. Be quiet. Please sit down.
Concentration camp a million because I have different opinion and different religion. Why we the FIP? Why are they wrong? No, I don't want. Call police. I have right. You don't touch me. Call pa, I'm sick. You don't have sense. She make decision, allow. So you trespass me or not?
Yes.
What is me trespassing? Is a crime? Why trespass? For what? What is I did wrong? Can explain to me? What is word you don't like? Nazi?
As the presiding officer, I am now recessing this meeting until 2:40.
2:40?
Yes.
2:40 will conclude the public comment?
It is now 2:40, and the February 13, 2024 city council meeting will come back to order. We'll have to take roll again, please. Go ahead.
Councilmember Strauss? Councilmember Wu?
Present.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Present.
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Saka?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you very much, and I apologize to the folks that have been waiting to speak. You know, I've been trying to offer positive reinforcement to Mr. Zimmerman for not engaging in abusive behavior, but I did have to, I did have to stop that. So, is there any?
Council President?
Yes.
Point of personal privilege.
Go ahead.
I just want to reflect on what just occurred because Mr. Zimmerman has been before my committee in the past where I have explained that when he calls me Gestapo and fascist, it has a different impact than it has on most people because my family actually had to run from the real Gestapo in Nazi Germany in the 1930s. And it is very different than what we have here in our country. I've explained this to him on the record. I have seen him participate in public comment without using harassing language, and I have seen him participate without being disruptive. But after hearing these aspects of my life, he stopped calling fascist Gestapo, and he has begun doing that again. And that, it seems harassing to me. And beyond just me, like, take me completely out of this picture. It is disruptive to this body doing its work. Just watching how it impacts the other people in the audience and watching how it impacts our ability to get our work done. I am a full supporter of free speech. It's a constitutionally protected right. And we have rules here at the city council that does not allow for harassing and disruptive behavior. And that is what I just witnessed. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much. That's very well put and exactly why I did what I did. So, thank you very much for your input. Okay, moving on with public comment. The hybrid public comment period is reopened. And who is our next speaker? You may proceed. Is that a remote person?
It's a remote speaker.
Okay. We're now allowing remote speakers. Please press star six.
Just muted herself.
You need, I think you just muted yourself, so now you need to press star six to unmute yourself.
I am unmuted.
Great, go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Yvette Dynas, founder and executive director of the Color Girls Garden Club. And since 2020, we have been feeding our community twice a week, and I believe I sent you the flyer. And for what it's worth, most of our supporters are not unhoused. But the reason I'm calling in today because yet another article in Seattle Times about the homeless situation and the affordable housing issue. Even though there are multi millions of dollars going into the situation, in particular, the King County Regional Homeless Authority, which was designed to oversee King County's financial and strategically respond to the crisis, the results have been dismal. My takeaway is, what I would like to suggest is to use that funding to, to give, to help people that are struggling to pay their rent, to pay their rent so they do not end up houseless. And also to use that funding to rent motel rooms or better, to buy motels, such as King County did. And then also regarding that there is a move-on or petition underway to make that happen. Because I know that there are not enough shelters that can get people off the street, nor is there a lack of funding. So, that's pretty much all I had to say is that the solutions are out there. There's money out there. And can we please, 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 help our citizens to get off the street? Help our citizens to stay housed? Because like I said, the money is there. Thank you for listening. And I want to give a shout-out to the Seattle King County Clinic, which starts tomorrow for four days. And it's a wonderful resource for all of those who want free healthcare, free quality healthcare. Thank you for listening. Hope to see you guys in person soon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Haynes.
Hi, my name is David Haynes. I want to clarify with council why we have a societal implosion. In 2012, US Attorney Jenny Durkan, an Obama appointee and George Soros operative, was tasked with suing Seattle Police Department. During the negotiations, she slipped an arguably treasonous and unconstitutional sentence into the negotiation of police reform that said low-level drug pushers exempted from jail. The police negotiator agreed, never clarifying we only legalized proper grown marijuana. Ex-councilmember Bruce Harrell, now mayor, convinced ex-councilmember member and present deputy mayor Tim Burgess to go along with this agreement. Then, after the federal judge James Robart signed up on it, it became the law of the land. To implement this sabotage police reform, Ed Murray, who was advised by Lorraine Gonzalez, who became the council president and defunded the police, advised how to shift the paradigm of policing away from improving a war on illicit drugs that, to combat crack meth, heroin, and fentanyl, that progressives perverted as being on par with cannabis. Previous progressive politicians have tainted every aspect of our committees and government services to prioritize evil criminal repeat offenders to get first priority on housing and services, not have to go to a properly improved punishment of jail. Never question, and quite frankly, you need to investigate the community safety $30 million because they used some of that money to pay rival gang members to move to Arizona and different regions of this country because they were deemed most vulnerable because they didn't know any better. And they destroyed people's lives. And the mayor bragged during the campaign that he has friends in the underworld, and he says all we need is a summit for the rival drug gangs. He has been tainting the efforts to solve the crisis because he keeps running interference for the criminal underworld drug pushers. And he put an interim police chief who sabotaged every crime fighting unit blaming the homeless while allowing the evil drug pushers to destroy people's lives. Go to Third Avenue between Pine and Pike, between Third and Fourth. It's imploded. You can't even go and pay for your sound transit because there's racked out people.
That was the last remote speaker present to speak.
Okay. We've reached the end of the registered speakers. The public comment period is now closed. Thank you, everyone, for your polite comments today. So, if there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. And if there's no objection. And if there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. Okay, now we'll consider the proposed consent calendar. Items listed on the consent calendar are the minutes of January 12, 16, 23, and 30, 2024, and the minutes of February 6, 2024, and Council Bill 120743, which is the payment of the bills. Are there any items council members would like to remove from today's consent calendar? Hearing none, I move to adopt the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent calendar. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the consent calendar?
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera? Excuse me, Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Saka? And Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. The consent calendar items are adopted. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the minutes in legislation on the consent calendar on my behalf? Okey-dokey. Moving on to item one. Will the clerk please read the title of the item into the record?
Agenda item one, Council Bill 120738 relating to flood plans, six extension of interim regulations established by ordinance 126113 and as amended by ordinance 126536 for additional six months to allow individuals to rely on updated national flood insurance rate maps to obtain flood insurance through the Federal Emergency Management Agency's flood insurance program for public hearing and vote.
Thank you very much. Before I open the public hearing on this item, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Morales, who is the sponsor of this bill. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Colleagues, we did talk about this yesterday in council briefing, but for the viewing public, I'll give a quick snapshot. Council Bill 120738 would extend for an additional six months interim regulations for the development of mapped flood planes. These were initially proposed by Mayor Durkin in 2020, and the regulations adopt maps that show locations of federally mapped flood hazard areas and also require that new development be built to withstand flood events, including the requirement that habitable floors be above the mapped flood base flood elevation. So there has been some ongoing negotiation with the port. STCI, our Department of Construction and Inspection, anticipates that those conversations will be done shortly and that there will be proposed permanent regulations this summer. But we have interim regulations for the, in the meantime, and that requires that we renew the six-month extension, and we are at the point now where we need to renew the extension. So when we are at that point, it does require that we have a public hearing. So that is what we are doing next.
Thank you. Are there any questions about this item before we go to public hearing? Okay, I will save my questions until afterwards. Madam Clerk, are there any people signed up for public hearing?
We have one remote public comment speaker.
Thank you very much. I will now open public hearing and give that person two minutes. Go ahead, please.
David Haynes. Do you have two minutes, please?
Hi, David Haynes. I, you know, as far as deregulating the flood planes, I think it's a telltale sign that you have to have 21st century first-world quality redevelopments that build a lot higher, that save trees by building a lot higher and maybe giving over some roads that are bothering and driving through neighborhoods to have them robustly built out. Because this sort of sounds like, and I could be wrong on this, that council is trying to implement another watered-down interpretation of affordable housing, where you're literally going to put the disproportionate oppressed poor into working-class housing in the flood plain and acting like you're doing them a favor by making sure that their forest is going to be a little bit above the standard bear so you can hustle some federal money. You know, I think we really need a 21st century redevelopment that has legislation that prioritizes banks to finance new homes, but not necessarily right next to the industrial train or right next to the bus that's warehouse echoing and all of these, like, cosmetically prettified concrete structures that cause mental crises and make people drink themselves to sleep because it's such a beeping, noise-polluting violation. But yet progressives think they're doing the oppressed a favor by keeping them out of the better neighborhoods that could have a robust build-out as a favor to the establishment sellouts who came out here in the 80s that bought up a house and said you're not allowed to build anything nicer. But when you have a flood plain that you're going to purposely put people into acting like you're doing them a favor, I think it's a suspect telltale sign that sometimes the liberal bottom-of-the-barrel progressives don't have the best ideas. And they do certain favors that act like, you know, if you're a lesser-of situation and we're going to prioritize a skin color to make sure that you get to live in the, like, flood plain, I don't know, it's kind of suspect to me. But good luck raising the floors and the levels of buildings higher. That's the best.
That concludes the registered and present public commenters for this hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. So, moving on to the content of this legislation, am I correct, is it likely that we'll be back in six months extending the deadline again?
What I know is that the port is reaching end of their conversation about the SEPA appeal, which is what they filed, and that what we hear from STCI is that they expect that we'll have permanent regulations to submit by the summer.
Got it. And it's my understanding that the reason we had to do this in full council instead of go through committees because tomorrow is a deadline or we're up against a deadline?
Yeah. Well, the six-month extension period is ending, and so in order for us to renew, we have to get that done.
Really bad things will happen or something. Okay. All right. Thank you very much for taking the lead on this. I don't see anybody's hands raised here. So if that is the case, would you, do you have any final comments?
I do not.
All right. Then, just a moment. I will, I've already moved the legislation. I have not moved the legislation. Let me move the legislation. I move to pass Council Bill 120738. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the bill. I don't think that anybody has any other comments. So will the clerk please call the roll on the passage of the bill?
Councilmember Strauss?
One last time, yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Saka?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Nine in favor, none opposed.
Okay, the bill passes and the chair will sign it. Will the clerk please affix my signature to the legislation on my behalf? Okay, there were no items removed from the consent calendar, and there are no resolutions for introduction and adoption today. So is there any other business to come before the council?
Yes, Council President?
Yes.
May I, I request to be excused on February 27. I have a community meeting that ends at 1:00. And if anything goes wrong, I won't be available by 2:00. I know I can rescind this if I do show up on the 27th, and I, colleagues, I might be taking it from my district office, which is closer to the community meeting. So my intention is to be here on the 27th, and yet still, I request to be excused on February 27.
Covering all bases.
Indeed.
Got it. I appreciate that. Are there any objections to this request? Okay, if there is no objection, Councilmember Strauss will be excused from the February 27 meeting if he can't be here on time, which he probably will because he runs a pretty tight ship. Anyway, all right. Hearing no objection, you're excused. We've reached the end of today's agenda. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be held on February 20 at 2:00 p.m. And we are now adjourned. It is 2:59. Thank you very much, everyone.